All right. Good morning. I'd like to welcome everyone to the Atchison County Commission Meeting for Tuesday, April twenty-third. I'd like to call the meeting to order. If you please stand and join me. I have a prayer for elected leadership. Oh, God, give us strong, wise, compassionate leaders. Send us leaders with truthful hearts and impassioned spirits who will stand for justice and freedom for all. Give us leaders who will unite with other leaders to bring about a kinder, more peaceful world. Leaders who will support their coworkers during times of challenge and change. Give us leaders who are servants of the people, listening, encouraging, caring for all races, creeds, and cultures, welcoming those seeking asylum, providing a safe place for all to thrive. Amen. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the Father of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, public comment. Be none. Approval of the minutes. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes from April fifteenth, twenty twenty-four?
So the second.
It's been moved in second. Any discussion? Okay, been moved in seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pass this three to see. Right, Commissioner comments. Commissioner Reedus.
I didn't prepare for that. I'll let Casey discuss the kind of Kansas County Commissioner Association. But I went to the meeting. I was there for one day. It was very, very good what I was in there for. I'll elaborate a little more if you'd like.
Yeah, no, the forty-eighth Annual Kansas County Commission Association held their annual conference in Pittsburgh, Kansas last week. It was Tuesday. It was a special budget workshop Wednesday and Thursday. So much incredible information, really good. I have a notebook full of notes that, things to work with staff here and kind of brainstorm and see what we can implement or alter to make Atchison County better. So, yeah, just a lot of information. I'm excited to go through my notes and share with the department heads that different things pertaining to as well as my fellow commissioners when they're ready. So, Commissioner Noel.
I don't have anything to do with cleanup date.
Oh, yeah, and every, yeah, thank you to everyone that participated in Atchison County Cleanup. It was Friday and Saturday, and I know there were several schools and organizations and local businesses that all pitched in and it made, made a difference, so. All right. So, ten a.m. we have topic of Harway Trust. Joining us today is Tony Twiman, the Bank of American trustee for the Harway Trust, Ethan Hausman, and Rick Burger. So, welcome, gentlemen. Thank you for joining us and looking forward to visiting with you about the Harway Trust. It was applicable to Senior Village when we, when we had it, and we've recently sold Senior Village and just want to have a discussion and ensure we can keep those funds right here in Atchison County to continue following Mr. Harway's wishes and excited to hear what you have for us. So, welcome.
Yeah, thank you. So is there any specific questions or you just want to know kind of our thought process?
So, we've brainstormed a bit and we kind of have some, some thoughts and ideas. And county counselors very informed on the trust and all of the things. So, we've kind of had those internal discussions of just making sure that we keep that, the funds right here in Atchison while still honoring his wishes. So, yeah.
Let's just give, why don't you give us your.
Yeah.
I mean, that's the, the duty of us as fiduciaries to really understand the nature of that governing document. And unfortunately, as Rick and I discussed, there's, he didn't put a successor beneficiary to those assets. But we do take a lot of consideration into what that donor intent was. It was obviously for seniors in that position. And now that that center is no longer, you know, a viable entity to give it to, as it's for a for-profit now, we do need to consider what the options are to still maintain donor intent. It is our intent to continue to disperse those assets to the, to Atchison. In a manner, I think, for seniors in some capacity. And I think that's what Ethan and I, as well, as well as our internal fiduciaries are discussing, what's the best method of doing that?
Okay.
So it hasn't necessarily exactly been mapped out yet to this point.
Okay, perfect. And that's kind of how it has been for us as far as, you know, we have ideas and some applicable organizations that are nonprofit and deal with seniors or looking at nursing and possible scholarships to, to help these nurses. You know, just, those were some of the things that we've thrown out in discussions of how to, to continue to fit the mold, right? And, and to continue to help right here in, in Atchison County, so.
So what kind of how would this look? We've discussed different things and, and like maybe having a committee or somebody that, some board that would suggest applicable recipients of that yearly? Or are you looking more for something that before it was the nursing home? It was approved and it was just every year the nursing home got that? Or was, could that be moved into more of a fluid thing that could be applied for on a yearly basis?
That's definitely under consideration to make it more of a discretionary grant-making trust. That would be similar to Turner Bromley that's already supporting this region. But it would be still dedicated to the Atchison residents. So it would be more of an application process. And obviously, we use a committee for Turner currently locally. So that'd be consideration of, do we, we probably, corporate banks aren't quick to give power away, so. So it would, it would be an advisory committee at best as opposed to physically naming anything in an amendment.
Did you share this with Tony, the thing I kind of drew up? That working document, have ideas?
No, this is just me.
Kind of brainstorming between talking with Rick and just trying to figure it out. So, you know, I'll just, I'll just give you a copy. I mean, sure, there's a few guys who don't have, but this is just, it's, it's just kind of Q and A built into that whole thing where if I judge, are these ideas viable? Does this make sense? Does this flow well? You can kind of scan over there.
Sure.
Get an idea.
One of, one of the other things that we've talked about in some detail is because the Kansas Attorney General has a statutory obligation duty, I'm not sure what the right word is, to be involved with it. We, we think it's very important that we have a plan well thought out before, before getting them involved essentially, so to give us a little bit more of a guidance voice, I guess, in guiding that discussion with the court. So realizing that ultimately the decisions won't be made by a district judge. So, but from my understanding and discussions, really fourth hand, I guess, or third hand, as I'm discussing with Alan is Rick, discussing with you, that, that I think everybody's on the same page about making sure that we've done that.
Right.
And, you know, I think we're on the same page with the, the intent of the donor being philanthropic, elderly, Atchison County health-related, you know, those types of themes, I guess, or
Right.
What I, what I generally hear, so.
Yeah. And I've got a close relationship with the deputy AG, Jake Casillo, who's there now. And so I was in a recent proceeding with him, and so I did indicate we would be coming back then for another item for Atchison. So he's vaguely aware, not necessarily the terms, but we're, we work closely with him as an organization.
Good. So, so keeping in mind with the healthcare connection, because the original trust talks about nursing.
Right.
And nursing and where you were, where you're based, starting nineteen fifty or something.
I believe so, yeah, yeah.
So, since then, we have five patient care, the hospice, physical care. We have always auxiliary healthcare uses for elderly and senior citizens or disabled that we didn't throw in there. So would that all fall within that umbrella that you feel like we could be easily argued?
Yeah.
Okay. The other challenge is the nonprofit side. So I don't know all this for sure, but I should say hospice. So maybe hospice is for profit. Maybe there's a nonprofit hospice. But maybe they're based out of, say, Brown County, but they come to Atchison. So how do we thread those needles where maybe there's some way we can support that? Yet the money, I mean, how do you, how do you know for sure it didn't correct the grant? I mean, so I think there's a certain amount of legal room because we have services that come across county lines. We have to serve our citizens.
I mean, through our discretionary grant-making process, it is a formalized online process that has, it's not complicated, but it is thorough in the sense of what the description of the organization is, the description of activities, who they're serving, where they're serving, demographics. So through the application process, we can get their budgets and understand their, their underlying project costs or, or individual associated costs as we evaluate that. And again, that's something similar that happens with the Turner Trust as we, you know, evaluate organizations that we're granting out there that may be in the same scenario. So we have the ability to identify how those dollars would be applied through our application process.
So that's the, the poor list that Courtney Turner is the same way, so it's quite similar to that.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Because it's, to my knowledge, there's not another nonprofit senior center in Atchison County, correct?
Yeah. Just project concern. Yeah, which has two locations, but yeah, it's one organization. So like recently, I was talking, so I know the, the YMCA, Project Concerned, Livewell, and the Community Health Clinic, which are all nonprofits. And they were talking together about how they could put together some programming as a shared venture with some of this money to help senior citizens that have project concerns. They're both having him in Atchison, so they, they're just now brainstorming this and putting some ideas together, bringing up maybe an LPM, maybe some athletic folks to do some training or do some exercise. Is that the kind of thing that would, would fit okay?
Yeah.
It looks like a really good collaborative effort to actually serve a lot of people.
Sure, yeah, and I, and I, I mean, as grantmakers and funders, we all like collaboration and collaborative projects to, you know, help more people. But we never want to be a sole funder of any initiative either. So, so to show that there's other community support and impact coming from other clients, be it or local or whatever it may be, we evaluate that through the application processes.
Okay. Yeah, because in that case, all, all four of those have other funding sources from the community that are all supported, so.
Right.
And using existing facilities. I think that, that would, to me, make a lot of sense because it really does bring a lot of folks together. And also make it some service, more things out of Effingham, which is kind of nice to make it countywide.
Sure.
Use, okay.
And it, it, it could give some relief to the Turners or the Bromleys around senior services to where they can open themselves up to, to fund other items where this one could dedicate to senior services within the community. So it, it'll create capacity for, for the other trusts.
So there's an advisory board put together that I would think that cross-section would have to be identified who should be on there. But well, some people that are knowledgeable, the elder care issues and healthcare and all that. But is that a role the county commission could play as far as appointing that board? I mean, it would appoint that board.
Yeah.
And with the money still come to the county that we, from you, and then already comes just from you too.
No, and I guess I'd, I'd ask that, do you, I mean, and maybe that's a question, you, do you agree that the county doesn't necessarily have an interest in those dollars anymore now that the senior center is not a viable entity? Okay, good, yeah. So, so in that case, no, it would, it would reside with us where it would continue to stay managed as it, as it always has been. And, you know, we'll call it a balanced appreciation portfolio for growth. And then we would, you know, through the, through the tax process, determine what the undistributed income was from the previous year. And those would be the dollars that we would disperse out to, through a discretionary grant-making process.
You know, our finance guy, Mark's gonna be upset. He wanted something else to keep track of.
Stick with the licensing.
Right.
So then the final step really for commissioners would be to, to develop this committee, then an advisory committee, and then.
Or do you want us to do that?
Or, or how does that, I mean, I don't, I haven't, I wasn't familiar with how the other committees were formed that you spoke of. So, and maybe that's something you do and, and we just.
You mean just the criteria of.
Well, just the committee in general, because the, the county is going to basically be done with it. I guess for us, we just wanted to make sure we're facilitating this conversation to ensure the funds stayed here and anything we can do to help, help that.
Yeah, so I can ensure that the funds are going to stay in Atchison, so that, that part, that part should make everybody happy. From like the Bromley, you know, we don't have an advisory committee. Do, do we work with folks here like Rick and other folks that are informed in the community to, to say, is this a valid project? Is this viable? Yes. Where Turner was more of an established process with having John Mize as the co-trustee. Right. To where now, I think that's something we could discuss with the, is it Judge Fresh? Is that right?
Yeah.
As far as what may be permissible, and there may be statutes associated with that, I don't know. As far as determining what an advisory committee would look like. And then it's my understanding, the, the state will not necessarily agree or disagree with anything. They just would give consent that they, that they don't have, they don't have any discontent with what we, what we propose unless it's egregious and outside of statute.
Where I would, if we work together, would, does that help sell it to the court? Then if it's got the county's blessing and, you know, maybe that we've worked together and then collaborated on this to, to make it happen, you know, then when you present it, it would be, okay, everybody's on board with it type of thing instead of, well, you're dealing with it, we're, we're taking the ball and run it. So I, that's where, I just wondered if the optics would, would help if it was that we were signing on.
Yeah.
To this.
Yeah, I, I think that's a discussion for Ethan and I to have, to determine what, what those other pieces look like. You know, I think ultimately it'll be written in the fashion that, you know, something along the lines of it's still the intent of the grantor that, you know, these dollars are allocated to senior services within Atchison. I think that at its minimum would probably satisfy the court knowing that, that, that is managing donor intent. So I think it would have to be really thought out of, of how the advisory committee was, was formulated. So I think those are further discussions to have, and maybe that's what's in here.
Yeah, I'm just trying to do this. The whole thing is, I'm, because my concern is, I know we're giving everybody else on the court, they're the right people on that board. They may not be the right people for this board.
Got you.
They're saying because their skill sets and just boots on the ground, knowing what's going on out there and at the older population and kind of having you know, maybe somebody out of Northeast Kansas, so the guidance there perhaps would be someone beyond there. There's maybe there are certain positions like that where they're going to have a knowledge base of where the needs are. In healthcare, you might have noticed it's changed a lot of the. And so keeping that fluid going forward, I guess, will be huge. So that's something I'm concerned about is making sure we get. And you may have some crosswords, could be one or two people on Bromley or Courtney Turner, it would be good to include.
Right.
But we need to expand it to more of a knowledge base of maybe elder care.
Got you, understood. And, and I think that's probably our takeaway then is what your other suggestions would be about who, how many, and what that would look like. And, and how their, you know, terms represented, things like that, so.
Yeah, I threw some ideas on there, which I'm, I'm not married to this at all. I was just like getting ideas on paper to work from.
Right. And I mean, it's not, most of these, I have a similar committee that I have down in Carthage, Missouri for a similar trust. And that committee was created by a former bank board. And then that bank board kind of carried forward those individuals and, and then they kind of just named their successors as went forward. Somebody of means within the community that was knowledge-based. So we have the understanding that Bank of America is not in this community. So I don't sit here, I don't understand fully all the needs. Can I read the proposal and determine them? Probably. But does it help to have a voice within the community? Yes. So I think regardless of whether we do it formally through the courts or whether we do it as a, a group, we can, we can probably come to terms with getting that outside advisement.
One thing that's been brought up by, like, some folks in Amberwell, along with some other folks, the idea of using some of this money for nursing scholarships.
Gotcha.
With the commitment to come back here and work in the elder group where Howard wanted to find that.
Right.
Geriatric care, but is that something that's a possibility or is that getting too far off the?
If, if it's holding them to a lifestyle that they have to come back to the, to the hospital, we're probably not going to monitor and, and oversee that process. So if, if it's for scholarships for, you know, residents that graduate from the high school or whatever, they go on for nursing training, I think that is probably something that we could support, but not, not a formal process that ties them to the community for a length of time.
Right, so then if, if we go forward with that idea, then who decides to get the scholarships? It becomes.
Right, and that's, and we won't do that. Yeah, we've kind of pushed all those scholarship requirements out of our.
Yeah, our community foundation does have a scholarship committee that could probably do that.
Gotcha.
So I'm just saying, there may be a way to do that.
Yeah, and. Yeah, and I'm very familiar with the community foundation and, and I understand Ethan's part of that too. So there is opportunities to fund the community foundation, and we do that through some of the other ones for match day and things like that. So definitely understanding of the benefit of the community foundation, how it could benefit in some of those type of grants.
I wonder if the Harway Trust would be, could you do that, really put a fund at the community foundation? I'm just thinking if it's going to help fund some local needs, if they had a presence. But I know, I know you get into the headquarters, foundation and a foundation, it gets a little complicated, but that may be a way to actually get more contributions towards.
The, the problem with that is then we turn over our powers trustee for the decisions.
So I'm in a small, small presence, not all the money, yeah.
Right.
Just to be visible.
So if it was a dedicated fund of some sort that was for the scholarships or.
Yeah, I kind of wondered if that might.
Yeah, that could.
Especially scholarship side.
Yeah, and I think that would be something where it'd be maybe a multi-year grant that's reconsidered every, you know, three, five years, whatever it is. Lots of, for sure, lots of ideas, so.
And what we're thinking.
No, no, you're asking the right questions. You're, you guys are obviously passionate about Atchison, so that's good.
So what's the timeline?
You know, I'd like to move fast because we are on a twelve thirty-one, or no, we're actually on a ten thirty calendar year. So I have requirements by ten thirty-one to move what was determined to be the undistributed income from ten thirty-one, twenty twenty-three, so. So I, I think after this, you know, that's where Ethan and I go to work. And that's what I wanted to understand from today too, is that you all have the same understanding of, you know, the interest of the trust going forward. And that now Ethan and I can put together a, a plan to the, to the courts around the amendment that falls in line with state statutes. And, you know, the language, work with the AG's office and determine how to push that forward. So the discussions around, you know, what an advisory committee or so would look like, I think we probably need to kind of wrap up within a couple of months so that we're at the latest, maybe running this by the end of July. That's of course the judge's docket too, so. I know there's an opportunity with the IRS to, you know, to advise them of the changes, the changing nature of the beneficiary, and we can get an extension of that dispersment. But it doesn't do any good for it to sit in our account either. It needs to go out to the community, so.
Yeah, are we, Mark, do we need money now in our account?
We're going to get clarified.
It's zero dollars.
Okay.
Okay.
That's good.
I thought we had received a check.
Yeah, I thought so.
As we, we ceased operations at the end of March. And I think we received a check after that.
Okay.
We're not sure.
Okay, that's a note for me. I'm going to take that check home with you.
It's actually a wire. It's not a check.
Oh.
And that, that's maybe being too conservative about using the funds, but we, we follow use them to pay nursing salary, not to reimburse nursing salaries that we already paid. And maybe that distinction, I know that distinction's not explicitly in the trust, but that had been our, our concern. So you also mentioned the year. I know that the annual statements close in July. At least that, that, but that may just be the accounting period that the court has, so.
It may be. I think that's correct.
I think that is correct.
Right.
So that's a lot quicker than.
Right. And, and the court accounting wouldn't be as much of a concern. Because that's a requirement because it was established as a will. Or from a will.
Well, I'm envisioning that's when we continue in perpetuity. But maybe, maybe you don't.
We don't, I mean, we could petition for that. I mean, it's, it's, I don't do it on ninety percent of the charitable trusts I have. It's, it's really Kansas requirement when they're created by will. All my Missouri trusts don't require me to do an annual court accounting. So it's, it's not a burden necessarily. It's a good checks and balance. Somebody has to check it besides us. So I don't think we would bring that up unless the judge, you know, brought it up himself that it was a requirement.
So I, so I understood then also that you want to take the lead on filing something with the court, that that's not something you want us to do.
I believe I would call on Ethan for that.
Yeah, that would be the plan, but obviously, you know, before we, you know, these are the conversations we want to have before go that route, make sure that we're not springing anything on anyone. And there's obviously we want buy-in before we make a recommendation to the court from, you know, any interested parties.
Yeah, good, okay.
And the recommendation to the court would include the committee, like the setup of the whole? Or not? I'm just going back to read this point of like the individuals he feels that should be at the table, like how.
Right, I think I need to take that back to my internal fiduciaries because they'll be, as we sit in committee to determine, you know, how we move forward. I will make that recommendation that that's what the county wants and see what they determine in an official status.
Perfect.
So.
It seems to be the, the vibe I get from people talking about this in town too, just that.
Sure.
The idea of some folks around here kind of have an input, whatever that looks like, whatever makes it work for you guys, it's fine. It's just having that, which sounds like that's what you want anyways.
Sure.
You're liable to get requests from someone who's maybe not thinking the right way.
Sure, no, I understand.
Well-meaning, but. Yeah, so once it gives to the court and they make a ruling and all gets approved by the AG, then we're just totally out of it at that point.
Correct, yeah.
Do we have to take any kind of a formal action or anything? I don't think we do. Do we, there's no. It's just, oh, right, there's no.
Okay.
It's been in place a long, I don't know, but that's.
We've just been to beneficiaries. We haven't been in administration or.
Right, right, an interested party, sure.
Yeah, okay.
I'm good.
Kat, do you have any other questions?
I don't think so.
Okay. Well, we truly appreciate you traveling down here to meet with us in person and kind of tie up these conversations so that we know that it's moving forward and that it will stay here, so we appreciate that. And look forward to hearing next steps.
Yeah, yeah.
Definitely, if you have any questions.
Yeah.
Get back with us. I'd love to participate.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Guys, you know, to fight on the mill for and tell her we have forty-five minutes and see if she. Oh, never mind. I think good. All right, so we have, let's see. Give me a second. I have it. So Cory had sent us his E M. So Cory had sent us his EMS commission report for March twenty twenty four. Did you guys have a chance to review that?
Your.
Okay. Alright, so I would look for a motion to approve the EMS commission report for March twenty twenty four as presented by. Our director to have a motion to approve.
So moved, second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Passes three to zero. Right. Katie Sparks, Community Corrections Director with Order Three Information as well as Grants.
How are you guys doing?
Good, how are you?
Hi. Hey, if you want to, I might be willing to give it up, no?
Thank you.
Okay, so. I won't go over both agendas entirely, but I wanted to make sure you guys had a copy in case you guys have any questions. Um. I think underneath financials, the main thing that we have here is that we did have our audit for those three months. Um that's all we've seen. Um in our audit, there was no corrective action plans that we received. Um the only thing that we were given was some improvements. Where we keep our credit cards, they were in a locked filing cabinet. They wanted them in a lock box. So we purchased a lock box and put them in that.
So then you should put that in the filing cabinet?
Yeah. So they're double locked now. But and then on our mileage logs for our cars, we only had drivers. They wanted passengers too. So we added a column for passengers. Um, we have not received the finalized one, the finalized report from the audit. But April did send me a message today saying she was on vacation and should have it to me by the end of this week. In regards to our workbooks, the last time I was in, I told you guys about our workbooks. Um our juvenile had been approved, our adult had been approved. After our audit, what KDOC had asked us to do on our workbooks did not match their standards. And so the auditor could not pass our workbooks based off of what KDOC had asked us to put into the workbook. Hmm. So the auditor went back, talked to her boss who was who directed us originally. They reopened our workbooks, asked us to resubmit them in a different way. So we resubmitted them the way they wanted us to resubmit them. On the adult side, we had a difference of three dollars and fifteen cents. Um they approved that workbook for quarter one. When we went over to quarter two, we had a difference of a hundred and ten dollars. I combed through it. I had Mark reluctantly combed through it for me. He was ready to be done with it. Um we cannot find the difference. So I have sent emails over to KDOC. Originally, they told me, go ahead and submit it. We'll look at it and see what we can't see. I had not received any updates on it, but happened to get on Amplafund where I noticed it had been rejected. So then I sent a follow-up question, seeing this isn't projected. What was the outcome? What do I need to fix on my end? I have not received any response yet on the adult workbook. On the juvenile workbook, we originally had quarter one approved, quarter two was being reviewed. Um, they came back, asked us to redo it. When we went to go redo it, the way they asked us to, quarter one had a five thousand dollar difference that we could not. Figure out what this difference is. Again, Mark looked at it for me. I looked at it, could not find it out. KDOC told me to turn it in and they would look at it. I finally received communication at eight o'clock this morning from them on that one. Um, the things they asked me was things that I had originally talked to them back in September and October about, about how to put it in the workbook. They were asking if I put it in the workbook, which I did, so I'm waiting to hear back from them again. But at this point, out of my workbooks, only quarter one adult has been approved. I'm leaving on quarter one juvenile. And um quarter two to go in, so we're still on a standstill there. Um me and Mark did talk and we wanted to give them this week to try and get back to us. And then we were gonna go ahead and reach out to the next person up to see what we couldn't get. I don't know if you have anything you wanted to share on that. Okay.
No, well, I do.
Yeah.
Have something. I I it just went on for a very long time. And so to me.
Mm-hmm.
It's time to get it done.
Yeah.
And so I'm prepared to go along with Katie to move it up to get it done.
Yeah. So we have sent several emails, several calls. Um. I'll go a week to two weeks without a response. Um I have told them, you know. I am new at your guys' workbook, so it very well could be a mistake I am making. And I just need guidance on what the mistake is I'm making so I can change it. But then I don't get any response. I try and include Mark on everything I send so that he knows where I'm at. But I'm just still in the same area.
Yeah, I think it's important to point out too, we're talking a hundred and something bucks.
Yeah.
And. What, total of three trips now to Pika?
I've had two trips to Pika.
Two, but so did. So many.
Uh I had Nikki with me and Mike was on, yeah.
Basically.
Yeah.
And all that time, I mean, it just seems like somebody's got to figure this out.
Yeah, or make a journal entry to.
Just fix it.
Yeah, get you, get you just.
Yeah.
Start clean so that you can then.
That's.
I mean, cause it keeps rolling and you're gonna be off everything.
Yes.
Hey, as as I remember it, these workbooks have been a problem ever since. I mean, previous director ever.
Yes.
Uh is this a problem with other counties, other uh I mean, is this just the way they do business?
Um, I have heard other counties complain about it. Um I know one county I talked to in particular was having issues with one of their workbooks due to healthcare, their benefits and how it was paying out. I looked into that on our side, me and Mark looked on at it. And then I talked to KDOC, that was in our same issue. So it seems like everybody has an issue, but maybe a little bit different.
Mm-hmm.
But I also would hesitate saying it's a majority or minority, cause I haven't asked every county personally.
This has been a nemesis. I mean, just like when you say workbook, it's like, you know, there's a problem.
Oh, yes.
And it's even before you were on. I mean, it seemed like this just went back, so.
Yeah.
I mean, it's unfortunate, cause it's causing all these headaches, all this expense, and we're not getting any resolution to it.
Yeah.
Doing that, you're not getting something else done. You should be getting done probably.
Yes, yeah. So it is by far the epitome of my job, but we're making it through.
Mm-hmm.
Um I can't say on a positive, I know with the auditor looking at our stuff, there was no questions on how we expensed money. And what we were purchasing, so I felt like that was a win on our end. Um I rewrote or I had to write all the policies when I first came on and she said all our policies match exactly how they're supposed to. So it seems like on our end, we aren't doing what we're supposed to do. Like I said, it could be a mistake I'm making. I just haven't been able to identify it and I've asked somebody else to identify it and nobody else has been able to identify it. So I just don't know at this point, other than trying to get them to help us.
Yeah.
Um. In the juvenile. Let's see. I did give you guys our information on our cognitive services. We are still running our cognitive services. We have had. Uh ninety-nine youth referrals and thirty-six parent referrals. We are getting people in the programming and successfully completing, but we do have some that or we do have. A bit that are not completing. A lot of that is those that are not on probation, that the school has referred over to us and they're opting out of participation. So we turn that information over to the school. Um we keep their file open for a period of time with us so that. If we can ever get them in, we will get them in and help them with whatever their needs are. Um, let's see. We have completed fifty-one intakes for uh the year. We are going to be starting a human trafficking assessment. I think I sent you guys an email on that, just if you guys had interest in knowing more about it. But we already do a mental health assessment. It answers the youth answers questions and then it pops out a score to let us know. On the mental health, where our concerns are. We're gonna be doing that same thing with um human trafficking, so that if we do have somebody come into our intake. And they score in a certain area, we can get the right resources and hopefully get them out of that situation if they're in a situation. So we should be starting that soon. Um, and then I have information on the grants.
Have you found that that's concerning in our community?
We've had one youth that we had the concern of. It was not a youth from our community, but they were picked up in our community. So we did have one youth, but we wouldn't, I couldn't tell you if they were for sure in that incident or not.
Gotcha.
Um, so I do have, I split these up the. Right after the um juvenile agenda is the adult or right after the juvenile budget. So if you, the next thing is your budget or my budget for juveniles. And then right behind that should be an adult agenda that we had yesterday. Um, we're in the same spot financially with the workbooks and things along that nature. But we have been having, you see, I put in our clients assigned, so we have thirty clients in community, twenty-six absconders, fifteen in jail. Fifteen courtesy supervision and eleven interstate compact. Currently, we are at a sixty-two point five percent success rate. That is a rise from FY twenty-three. Um so hopefully we can continue to see that go up. We're hoping to complete the year at a seventy-five percent success rate. Um.
Is that a benchmark?
Seventy-five is, yeah, that's the state code.
Mm-hmm.
Um, our success rate was based off of six revocations. These were due to three obtaining new charges, three absconders. Nine successful completions and one unsuccessful completion. Unsuccessful could be anywhere from. Um. Their sentence had timed out and the only thing they owed was fines. And so they were sent to collections instead of remaining on supervision, things along that nature. Uh we currently have twenty-five uh bond us, bond clients. Um. With that being said, we have seen an increase in our funding from bond. Bond clients are charged fifteen dollars a week to be on bond. Um when I started, we had a lot that was not being paid. We implemented one of our conditions. We said if they cannot go more than sixty dollars overdue, otherwise they could be at risk of being revoked on their bond. So since that, we have been able to get people in compliance. We have seen an increase in the payments there. Um under that is our cognitive-based referrals. We have seen an increase recently on those, so so far we've had sixteen referrals. Four of those were unsuccessful unsuccessful completions. Five were successful, three are active in programming, two are waitlisted due to already being in programming. And we have two pending to start. Any questions on those numbers? Right, so that was the basic information that I discussed yesterday and our J-Cabs outside of our grants. So I did print off the budget and give each of you guys a copy of our of our proposed budget for FY twenty-five. I did not print off the entire grant and bring it in. Um due to Shelley being on vacation, I. Wasn't able to ask her what she usually brings you guys for the grant, so I only brought in the budget. I can send you guys the grant if you would like and come back in on Tuesday if you want to read more into it. But otherwise, I can discuss you our main, discuss with you our main objectives and what our budgets are supposed to be. Um so in FY twenty-five, our goal is to work on our case plans. This is what we put together for every single client to determine what is their risk every offense. So that we can help them be more successful when they come off of probation. So we are working to try and improve those. I'm actually hosting um a training for three different counties. In May, um on case plans, cause several counties are struggling with their case plans. But we're gonna put a huge focus between juvenile and adults on our case plans and our interventions and the programming we're offering these clients. So with that being said, you guys have a copy of our budget. Most of our budget looks pretty similar to previous years, but there are some things that I added in. Um on previous budgets, we did not include hotel or per diem. I included that in, cause that is something that we do use and we can use our grants to do that. Uh when we have people go to trainings or travel with clients, things along that nature. Um when you go over to agency operations, you will see that the rent and utilities is higher. Um we have talked about obtaining a new building for rent. Um I looked at all the rent around Atchison, around the area to try and get a base average. And then use that to determine what our rent could possibly be in FY twenty-five if we received a new building. We do have one building we are looking at. Um however, I did ask to set up a meeting with our landlords to see if maybe there could be some renovations to our current building. And we could increase our rent next year and avoid having to move out. I have not been able to have that meeting yet. I'm still waiting on their response to coming in meeting with us, so. Um utilities, I took our average utilities over the last year, added ten percent to them. To get what I believe our average monthly amount would be and put that in our utility line. Um, under client services, when we're looking at the adult grants. I have requested an additional sixty-nine thousand uh two hundred and thirty-eight dollars and thirty-six cents in behavioral health. Behavioral health is what we can fund client services like substance abuse evaluations, mental health evaluations, transitional living. Um along with programming, so a programming provider. The goal is if we were to be approved that additional sixty-nine thousand, we would hire another program provider. And then increase the amount of assistance we can provide to clients around Atchison. Um so you will see increases in that area on the adult one. On the juvenile one. With um us having that new grant, the juvenile behavioral health. We are focusing on using our client services mainly out of that grant. We did include some client services like drug testing or housing assistance. In our block grant that you're looking at right now. The main one being housing assistance, where I increased us to ask for seventeen hundred in the housing assistance for our clients. So that we can ensure everybody has a home or help ensure that.
So even though it's juvenile, we can help their families?
Yes, we can.
Okay.
So being mom, dad type of person, yeah. Um, under salaries. So I talked to HR. HR told me that when they look at benefits every year, they look at a ten percent increase in benefits. So I included a ten percent increase on my staff's benefits um in our grant. And then legislation is looking at passing a five percent cost of living increase again this year, so I included that as well. But I do have three staff that are eligible for a step increase this year. And so I included the step increase here as well. Um, one new area that you will see under salary and benefits is a payout fund. So that payout fund is to pay for when a client or a uh staff retires and they have leave, things like that. In the past, we've always used our reimbursements and our revenue that we receive. After talking to KDOC, I found out that we can include a payout fund as long as our county allows it, which we do. In our grant, um what'll happen is if they do approve it, then once we receive that money. We automatically have to create a new account. I'm sorry, Mark, um but create a new account. Um, that money will go into that new account. It can't be touched unless. I had a retired employee or somebody that leaves that I would have to pay leave to. Unless I needed the money for something else, let's say we had um. I don't know, an increase in cost of rent or something like that. And so I needed to amend some money and move it over. I can, but if I amend that money over and don't spend it all, I can't move it back into our payout fund. Now that payout fund will grow on each on itself every year from how I understand it. So even if nobody retires or leaves. That money doesn't go back to KDOC, it stays with us, but it can only be used for payout of action count, action community corrections client for our staff.
And do you base that on your kind of, like, I I know that you can't really. Look forward to retirements, but how how you budget or choose that number and then if it accrues. Do you have like a cap where you're like, okay, I don't need anymore or can it be used for other areas if you don't say it accrues?
Mm-hmm.
And you have a balance and then you don't have anyone for the next five or ten years? Like, is there, are there other areas you can use that for? Like salaries or?
If, let's say, this year I applied for ten thousand and next year I apply for ten thousand. This year I don't touch that ten thousand, next year. Um I'm gonna touch that ten thousand, but not for retirement. I want to move it over. I don't have the option to take twenty thousand. I can only take what I applied for in that current year's grant is how I understand it.
So you do have flexibility to utilize it. So you do have flexibility to utilize that.
Yeah, but if we take it out, we can't put it back in.
Okay.
That's the only thing.
Got it.
Um, and then over on the adult and juvenile grant. I did include registration fees. We are looking at more training that I can get my staff. None of my staff has trauma and born care training. It's a big help to have that kind of a training, so I am looking at trying to get my staff trained in trauma and born care. So that when we're working with clients, we can be working with them on their level and in a way that can be helpful. The only other difference is over on the juvenile grant, I included twenty-seven thousand fifty-seven dollars and fifty-four cents to be paid out to Atchison USB four oh nine for their truancy officer. This funding originally came from Leavenworth. In the last um several years, Leavenworth decided they did not want to be the middleman, so I said I would take it. And we will do an MOU with USC four oh nine. And Leavenworth will no longer have that MOU with them. It'll be us that has that this year. Like, anybody has any other questions on the budget? Or I can give you time to look at it, because I know I was talking.
And the four oh nine's the non-admin salary?
Yes, of the twenty-seven.
And then. It's non-admin benefits part of that as well?
No, that is, so how KDOC looks at it is there's administrative, which I'm considered an administrative staff. Um, my admin assistants administrative staff, and then there's non-administrative. And that would be my ISOs and things along that nature.
So on the truancy officer, support on I'm paying additional salary, so is that? It's a split salary, basically.
Yeah, I don't know how much they pay to it, but this is the max that we will pay to it, and this is what they've always. Yes, that's how I understand it. Any other questions on the budget? The last couple pages just show how I plan to break down. Like with substance abuse evaluation, sixty percent of the cost will come from our CMA grant, forty percent will come from JSP, things like that. Um, we did get these approved through both uh advisory boards. I brought the signature papers for you guys, but like I can, like I said, I can send it to you and give you guys more time to look at it if you would like.
What are your thoughts on the on the building? Um, because I know historically when we talked about it, um, it maybe wasn't ideal for.
So I'm still in the same place, um. It would be great if we could work with our current landlords to do some repairs that are needed. And then do some renovations. So we've added intake and programming, and that's where we needed to grow larger in our space. Um, we have a back storage room that if we could renovate that, we could make that into a programming room. Um, and then we currently have two bathrooms and a kitchen. One of our bathrooms has, I think, four stalls in it. And only a couple of those stalls are really working or used. Um, so the idea was to close that bathroom down, cap off the plumbing in there, move that bathroom over to where our kitchen is now, make that bathroom an intake room, since it's right next to an exit, and our concern with intake is we have police protective custody, which are supposed to be that nobody knows that youth is with us. And when we get a PPC right now, we have to shut down the office, basically. So if we get it at noon, we could have it until three. We can't bring any other clients back into our office during that period of time. So that's why we would need an intake room. And an exit, close exit where they don't have to walk all the way down our hallway to get where they're going. Um, plus, we would like to have a room that's made for youth and not an office that's made for a probation client. And then our other storage room that's up off our conference room, we're wanting to go all electronic with our storage, so we can make a small kitchenette in that area. Those would be the renovations if we were able to do those, along with replacing our carpet. If we're not able to do those, then I don't think it's gonna be a a space that we can stay in too much longer. Uh, we do have one area that Mr. Rebus, Dr. Rebus found for us. Um, I was hoping to talk to our landlords before I started looking at other locations. Just so they at least had a heads up. They have rented to us for a very long time. But I still haven't been able to get that meeting set up with them, so.
So Pat, on the lease agreement that's signed by the commissioners, are some of Katie's requests, should we draft a letter and? I mean, I guess to get her answers, I mean, the bathroom situation, especially if you don't have workable bathrooms, it's kind of a problem. Like, to just to begin the correspondence of like, hey, this, these are our needs that we, and would you be able to fulfill them? And then that'll give us our answer. Should we begin looking? Somewhere else.
Yeah, um. I'm hesitant about how much to say in that.
Oh, yeah, and we can.
Yeah, we we should, yes, to answer your question, yes, um, and in the past, that's proved very helpful. Uh, because once. Once the formality gets escalated, that is. Seem to get that more attention.
And I I do expect if we did get our renovations, there would be an increase in rent. So that would still fall within what I budgeted out for our rent.
Maybe you could summarize your needs to us, and then we can work with Pat to draft something up if you guys and and send it and kind of at least get.
I I don't think you get the weeds on, just. You just want, you want a meeting to go over the needs.
Yes.
I mean, so I think maybe you keep it simple on the latter, I would think.
Yeah, just.
And and we have another list when you meet personally.
Yeah.
What do you think that would have? Sure, that way it gives you time to really get more detail for a meeting.
It didn't sound like anything like crazy you're asking for is. Bathroom's not working and then a storage room converted into a office space, so.
Yes, and that's the main thing, just with, I mean, we've had this building. Quite a while. I I know we had it back in two thousand fourteen and several years before that.
Um, when one is when this.
And so I think when the building was originally renovated for us, it was perfect, but as we've grown and as we've moved our focuses and things like that, we just need to adapt our space to that, if that makes sense. So.
You didn't mention that hard drive.
No, I was going to, yeah, I wanted to, I'm trying to keep it clear as possible, because I always have a lot of information for you guys. Would you? I don't know if you guys want to vote on our grant today or if you want me to come back in next week and send you guys.
I mean, it's a pretty straightforward.
Yeah.
Um, so you just need us to approve your budgets?
Yes, you would approve our budget and our grant, and then I would need a signature from you guys on these two. One's a juvenile, one's adult.
Okay.
And they both have the board signatures already too, the advisory boards.
Alright, so I would look for a motion to approve the fiscal year twenty twenty-five juvenile comprehensive plan. As well as the budget presented from our Atchison County Community Corrections Director. Do I have a motion to approve?
So move, second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? Okay, seeing none, moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes. It's asking for. Trigger the sign. I need financial officer as well, yes. On this one there. And this. It's the one, oh, second page, there you go. Yep, there's the second page in this. The the last one was two. I think they all seem to this. Yeah. So there was one, there was, well, there's places for all of us.
Always.
But they just all have that same topic. Do you need us to initial your budget and you think there's that grant all you need?
Yeah, the grant is all I need to sign off.
Okay. Alright, I would look for a motion to approve the fiscal year twenty twenty-five adult comprehensive plan. And budget as presented from our c- communities corrections director. Have a motion to approve.
It's in the second.
Okay, it's moved to seconded, any discussion? Being done, it's moved to seconded, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Passes three to zero.
Used in that under human trafficking?
Yes.
Is, is there a lot of cost on that? I think I saw it somewhere for that training, is there?
No, it's provided by KDOC, um, free of charge for us.
Just the time it takes.
Yes. So I think it's, um, we're gonna do a collaboration meeting with the local law enforcement and the courts. Um, soon. And I expect that to be about a two-hour meeting, uh, which you guys are more than welcome to attend. And then, um, my staff will have about a two-hour training that they will do. Then the last thing I provided you guys was a copy of our current fund status, so it has what each of our accounts are currently at. Um, it should say fund status report on the top of it. Right now, we're in very good standing with our funds. We got our last um disbursement from KDOC. So. We should be, um. Very good for the end of the year. At this point, I try and project out all of our expenses, so I projected out what our salary benefits and our bills. Um, reoccurring bills such as rent, electricity, things like that would be for the remainder of the year. After those are all paid out up until um June thirtieth, we are looking at having about seventy-eight thousand eight hundred and four dollars that we have not expensed yet. We have been making sure that we stuck within a certain budget throughout the year before we looked at doing some higher expenses. So some things that we're looking at and that I need approval on is we would like to go to all electronic files. Um, to do that, I need to purchase some hard drives. Scott has already obtained a quote for those. And it's around ten thousand dollars. Um, five thousand of that would come from our adult grant. And then five thousand from our juvenile grant. It would cover us for two hard drives. So to purchase those, I did get approval from our advisory boards, but I do need your guys' approval. The other thing is I have three desks um in my office that need to be replaced. One of them does not have any, it's a uh, ISO desk, has no drawers on it. Um, other ones have broken drawers, things like that. Since we have the funding, I would like to purchase new desks for those three staff members. Um, along with a new conference room table and some chairs. So, and that's about nine thousand three hundred eighteen dollars and nineteen cents. Um, we will have some other expenses. They don't need approvals. They're all under five thousand dollars, but we will be doing some trainings. Um, I purchased new tires for both of our cars. We're gonna get the cars um cleaned professionally. Um. And then basic office supplies. We are looking at some new drug testing that is supposed to be more accurate. But which, once we do those expenses, we will have fifty thousand dollars. Um, that we do not expense out. I'm comfortable with that amount because it does take a while for us to get our next year's first disbursement of our grant. So that means we'll still have money in those accounts to cover anything we need to cover until that new grant comes.
So when do they claw that back? I mean, so is it like?
So.
October, September, is it later on?
Um, this year, they called it back during quarter two. Uh, is when we found out what it was, and basically what happened was is. Um. What we didn't expense just got subtracted from our disbursement. Yes, yeah.
That that's what's weird is that you're gonna be at zero by the way, after your bills the next day.
Exactly. So I do want to have a little bit left over there instead of bringing all my accounts down to zero, because like I said, I think. It was around July eighteenth that I received the money for FY twenty-four, the first disbursement for FY twenty-four. So I would have already had a pay period, had to pay rent and things like that with no money in the account.
I think it's great to go paperless and put everything.
Yes.
We've been scanning projects in the future and just having it all right there.
Yes.
Accessible would be huge for you guys.
Their rules are different, too. They gotta keep records for a long time.
Yeah, so we have to keep um a client file, the whole file has to be kept for five years, and then certain parts of the file have to be kept for fifty years.
And it's all being stored at your location?
Yep, so that's why we have those two storage rooms, which, once we go electronic, we won't need those storage rooms.
Yeah.
Somebody else in the county needs a filing cabinet, you'll be having.
I will ha- I will have a.
When you need that to put your safe in.
Exactly. The triple lock system, yes.
Funny about that is if I was meant to steal your credit cards and you put them in a little lock box.
Uh-huh, that's what you'd take.
Carry that out of the shoulder.
Exactly.
In the filing cabinet, I gotta get a two-liver and a guy, you know, I mean, it's a whole different animal.
So yeah, I can just, the only thing I need now is just the approval to purchase the hard drives and the new furniture. Um, and then the rest, I shouldn't need approval on.
You need a PO for that?
Yeah, it's probably nice to have um something, so ten thousand for hard drives, because you're doing five for adult, five for juvenile.
Yes.
And then you had mentioned nine thousand something.
Nine thousand three hundred and eighteen dollars and nineteen cents. So I have a PO from Scott on the hard drives that I can send you guys.
Okay.
And then I can come in next week with a PO. Um, for the furniture, if you would like me to.
We have an exact amount, we get to prove it and then get the PO signed.
Yeah.
Later on.
Yeah, and so as far as fund-wise, do I need to specify juvenile? Okay, this, we can just do the nineteen thousand three eighteen nineteen for. Two hard drives.
Yeah, you can just say I can be corrections bonds.
Okay. Then that's three desks.
Three desks, a conference room table, and twelve chairs. Conference room table, it's kind of broken on the side, so people are getting cut on it. Kathy has been taping those areas, so it's a little safer.
So I would look for a motion. To approve. Nineteen thousand three hundred and eighteen dollars and nineteen cents. Ten thousand of that is for two hard drives, nine thousand three hundred and eighteen dollars and nineteen cents is for three desks, the conference room table, and three chairs, all to be paid out of the Community Corrections Fund as presented by our Community Corrections Director.
It's twelve chairs, sorry.
Did I say?
You said three.
Of three desks, twelve chairs, sorry. Twelve chairs. Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion.
Okay, it's moved to seconded, any discussion? Okay, it's moved to seconded, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Passes. Three to zero. And you guys all got that, right? So, okay, you're good to.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you. And then I put your signed grant in here, so that Art can sign them and then they'll scan them in. Okay. Twenty twenty-fourth. Finance Director, twenty twenty fourth annual ARPA reports submission.
Yeah, so. April thirtieth of every year is our deadline to submit our ARPA reporting requirements from the United States Treasury Department. So I submitted those, they've been accepted, and just for. Purposes of informational, so that you guys are aware how much we've expended, how much is remaining. There's a form that I would like for you to sign, just so you acknowledge where we're at with, with it as well. It was signed last year and the year before, so this year should be no different.
So this is the void group rescue expenditure tracking summary showing total rescue allocation, three million one hundred and twenty one thousand nine hundred and ninety two dollars. Current to date, eight hundred and eighty two thousand nine thirty eighty was allocated. An unencumbered cash on hand, two million two hundred and thirty nine thousand sixty one dollars and twenty cents. Do I have a motion to approve as presented from the finance director?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved, no, you're fine, it's been moved and seconded, any discussion? Okay, hearing done, moved and seconded, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Passes three to zero, we'll just all sign down.
And this is annual reporting.
Annual report.
And then, so where do we get? It's been maybe end of twenty six, is that saying?
That's correct, so it needs to be allocated or spent by end of twenty four, but then final spent by the end of twenty six. Thank you. Then my next item is a civil money penalty. Charge that we've received from the senior village facility. Due to not reporting COVID nineteen statistics in the month of February. There was penalty charged from CMS. It's, it comes at a thirty five percent reduction, cause we waived our right to an appeal. I think it was clear that, that we did not report it, we did not have proof of reporting it, so we had the penalty and, and so that's the purchase order to pay that to CMS.
I'm glad that it was found that the last report was counted, because I was expecting this to be more when we were getting hit six thousand every Monday, so. I think that we did the right thing, not appealing it, it is what it is, and we move, move on, so I would look for a motion to approve. This purchase order in the amount of nine thousand thirty two dollars and forty cents, the centers for Medicare and Medicaid services, going. For senior village, as presented from our finance director, do I have a motion to approve? Moved in seconded, any discussion, seeing none, moved in seconded, all those in favor say aye.
Aye. I do have a question. Because this was due to error by employees and we. Go with the factory insurance for errors or missions or any, is there any angle there for? You know, Pat, is there anything there we?
I haven't thought of it, I don't. I doubt it, but we could look, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, maybe we're, it was a phone call, we're asking, I don't know.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not real familiar with the E and O policy at the senior village, because it was.
Yeah, it's more.
But, it might.
Okay. I just thought of that, maybe, maybe just asking, I guess.
Do you have a copy of the policy?
Hmm, I could probably find, find one, find it.
Yeah, we're still.
And then, you have never seen your village? Feels like this is that last thing that's kind of hanging out there, that we knew of, is there anything else that you're aware of?
Not to my knowledge, no, we, we still have the PHD billing that we're doing monthly, just to help us get caught up, but as far as bills. There was one that's, that's coming in, it was to clean the grease trap, that was, they, they came in February, but we didn't get the bill held now. So, and that's three hundred dollars, but other than that.
This goes on for a little while, that's what I was curious.
I don't think that there's much like this out there.
No, okay.
Okay, thank you.
Sounds good, thank you. All right, Joe Snyder, Rodenbridge Superintendent, Bridge Discussion and Department of.
I apologize on everything I was sending late, just been really, really busy trying to get it all taken for the meaning of this one. So, the off system and Kansas local bridge improvement. The applications have to be in by May twenty fourth. So, let's send you guys a list of. The bridges, here is maps, and I have circled this, and we don't have to decide this today, but. So, I have circled where every bridge is on this list, I've got one printed, buddy. And, Roger, you got, he's off this a little bit. So, I've been on the phone with KDOT, and I was on the phone with KDOT this morning on the bridge. Part, and. Sufficiency ratings are going by the wayside, and they're going by classification of poor. So these bridges, all of them, but this bottom one that's three point oh one one on the off system. We can scratch it off, all the rest of them are rated as poor, so the bottom, the very bottom bridge. On the list. Three point oh one one.
Okay, that's, that's not.
Yeah, scrap, you can scratch it off.
This is the, what's, what's, what's on the document I pulled up?
The on off.
On off system bridge list.
Oh, okay. There's a fact sheet.
Tribute to Delaware River, that one.
Yes, yeah, it's straight west of.
So it's not.
No, no, I just marked it off, so all the rest of them are rated poor. So we have to decide by, before May twenty fourth, hopefully a week before that, at least, which bridges we want to apply for. We've been applying for twenty five three H one. And I feel like we should do that again, it's on Sheridan Road where two sixty second comes into Sheridan Road.
What number was it?
It is twenty five three H one. And I found out today, cause we've had this question, you know, when you turn off a fifty nine on the Phillips Road. The bridge there with all the holes in the deck, so we can apply for a deck replacement.
Well, that's.
So, so that, yeah, so that bridge actually has an eighty eight point two sufficiency rating, but it grades poor because the deck is shot. So, as, as long as we, there's no weight restrictions, we can actually also apply for that deck to be replaced. Had it been on a sixteen ton bridge, you would want to replace the whole bridge, you wouldn't want to replace just the deck. But, so, so these are, these are the lists that I came up with, I talked to, like I said, KDOT. And they, she's told me this morning that we wanted to get the ones that are poor, now anything that was on a dirt road is not on this list. The, just, I, I mean, if you guys want them, I can get them to you, but to me, it really makes more sense to be.
Are any of these on a road that within the next couple of years, we're gonna do an improvement plan? You know, like Ottawa or?
Well, there's one on Ottawa, but it's, it's right off the highway on fifty nine, so right when you come off of fifty nine, number four hundred. So it's, it's on that list also, so there's two of them right there, coming off of fifty nine that have been there since, what, nineteen?
But that's not on the portion that.
No, yeah, no, nineteen thirty six, and then the other one. Is nineteen forty. But these are, these are the ones, you know, Eric, there's those two out there on two fourteen or two twenty second, Steve. Yes, those two are, those two are on the list, so.
Now that, the reason that one, that's kind of significant, there is an area, there's, bridges are really close together, but. The person that harms that ground can't get over either one of them legally.
He put in a lower, he put in a rock, low water crossing.
He did?
Yep, north of the first, the west bridge.
Oh, excellent.
Yeah.
Okay, because that was a bad thing, because he couldn't actually get to it at all, you know, and it's like if we could have replaced one one or the other, but if he's got access.
I'm just telling you what I saw the last time I drove down the road.
That helps with the pressure, you know, as far as.
Yeah. Go ahead, Casey.
Okay, so you had mentioned, we don't look at sufficiency rating anymore, this is classified.
I was, this is.
This is still more information for us that we can make our decision, even though they're.
I'm not saying sufficiency rating won't help, but at the same time, my understanding with that KDOT official this morning was. Being that we're changing the whole way they do the bridge inspections and going to a different federal part of it, or however they're doing it. That it's gonna be mainly on bridges that are rated poor, they want those taken care of first, and sufficiency rating is not gonna be. So, all right, so auto road north of Atchison, where we just replaced two seventy, there's a little fifteen, twenty foot bridge, okay? And it says poor, but hardly is there ever enough weight on that bridge.
Right.
I mean, because it's short, it's short enough, the equipment's spanning it.
Yeah.
So, the, these are off of, and I did put in the off road. Or off system and the KLIP sheet, these right here, to tell you the program guide list. And eligible bridges, this is on the Kansas Local Bridge Improvement Program, rated poor under current NBI permit. Hosted for less than legal load required due to road lighting, and it gives you all the lists. But it was my understanding that if, if we work with the ones that are poor, we're gonna have a better chance of getting those replaced first.
What's our typical match on these?
The off system can be up to, it goes off of a percentage, I'd have to look that up, it's a percentage. Of, and it may be in one of the, the PDFs I sent you guys, but it's a percentage depending upon your county and your population.
Okay.
And all that.
Some of those tend to eighty or ninety percent.
Yes, yes.
So they're significantly.
Yes.
They're paying it, they're paying.
Yes.
So on the posting status, the A open, there's no load restriction on that, is that what it's telling me?
That would be on.
On the Phillips.
Yes, there's no, so that would, so that would make it more attractive to replacing the deck.
I was just gonna ask about load restriction.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, so if it has sufficiency rating eighty eight, so everything else is good, but the deck is shot, that's why the bridge is poor, and she told me this morning that would be a good one for. Deck rehabilitation to apply for, so that's something that, you know, I've been trying to find out.
And then.
Cause you, you normally look and you say sufficiency rating eighty eight, well, we're not doing anything with this bridge, but as everybody who's traveled that road, that deck is shot. And it is bad, it's just like the deck that we're working on, on M point oh twenty six four, you know, maybe had we had. The foresight to see it, that would have been one we would apply it for, for a, for a deck replacement.
And some of the other ones then would be the whole bridge.
Right, that's the only one right now that would be that I would, and you, you have to look at it this way. Possibly that would be more attractive, cause the expense is gonna be a lot less than, or they may say that's not enough, and you guys can figure that one out yourself.
Sherman's or bridge replacement or a deck?
Sherman's or bridge repl, no, Sheridan, bridge replaced, yes, it's an arched bridge.
Yeah.
It's in poor condition, and we've, we've applied for it twice, and that's just my opinion, but you guys can look through these, that's why. I've circled where every bridge is, the bridge south of Bethlehem on Edwards, doesn't even look like a bridge, it's poor. I mean, and it just surprised me that it was at that rate, but it's a fifteen ton bridge on that road, so.
Gets a lot of traffic.
Right.
I guess that's pretty busy, that's pretty busy road, I think, and that's a very.
So I wanted to, to give you all the information I could, bring this list, and then you guys can, can look at it, have a chance to. To maybe go visit some of those bridges, like one ninety and five thirty on Sherman, and, and just kind of look at them and see, see what your opinions are, so we can come up with a. So what we'll do is we'll apply for say one, and then we'll have a next one, if, like two and two.
Is there a limit, how many you can apply for, or just about, college and our budget?
Well, we have to, our, figure out if we can afford our cost share, but you can apply for four different ones, you're probably not gonna get four, you know, if you get one. And we have had years where I got a local bridge improvement bridge and an off system bridge. But that's been a few years ago, cause we got several bridges there for a while, and we just got one last year, and we got one the year before, so we.
The one which may have affected us, right?
Right, so, but.
Federal?
The off system. Is. The off system bridge, is a federal program utilizing both surface transportation block and bridge program. Funds, and participation will be one hundred percent, there it is right there. The local agency will be responsible for any construction and construction engineering costs over the two million maximum, as well as a hundred percent of design. Right of way and utility relocation are non-participating, so basically, it pays probably ninety percent or better. And then the. The Kansas Local Bridge Improvement is Kansas.
I mean, I think we need to pick two or three programs we can, just to, you know. You never know what they're gonna like.
Right, but I just, I just wanted to bring this and give you guys a chance.
And that well, and, and unless, we're, we're not talking about real expensive bridges, you're not talking about forty foot bridges or anywhere, we're talking twenty footer and.
Well, the, the twenty three nine, I think it's, it's over. One going into, on Phillips's Long Bridge.
Yes, it is.
It is, it's a long bridge, but if we're just trying to get the deck replaced, it won't be as, you know, a couple hundred thousand compared to being.
That's what in my brain is like, well, let's go big for the cost share, like, if we've identified that needs to be done, maybe we budget for the deck repair. And do the cost share for these ninety percent paid, where, where it's a big deal, right, of like, but I see how they would be like, oh, this is a good one for it, because it's less.
Right.
So they.
And if you, and if you do it, and if you do it on the, if you do it on the local bridge. Their part isn't as significant as the off system is.
I think, for me, it's really about where the most traffic is and getting load limits up higher and all that, so.
I agree.
I mean, you know, secondary roads, you always find a way around, I mean, you make extra couple miles, but at least you get the best bridges going.
But this is, this is a list of the poor, that's kind of what we set out and we came up, I sat through there and looked through all of them and.
Which is this one up here off of Jewel?
All right, so you know where our bridge was struck by the sprayer this year?
Yes.
Last year, it's north of that. It's north of that, it's on a gravel road, it would be. I can take you right to it, north of three ten and south of three eighteen.
But you know, I'll drive over probably on the way home.
It's on a, you go through a little curve and.
So the north half of the entire Canada is the only bridge, it's.
No, there's a lot of bridges on dirt roads.
Right, this far.
You know, right, only one of the. Right, and I didn't, I didn't geog, geographically select these, I just went off of our, off of our bridge list.
So, just off the thing, without looking at any of the other things, I mean, I'm looking at this one on Edwards, because I know the traffic. And I like the idea of the deck replacement off of the, just wanna share it, was it?
No, that's.
Phillips, yeah, Phillips. That one for Ottawa, because when we did work on our road, should we include that?
I don't know, I, I just wanna give you guys the option to, to sit back for a week or so and, and kind of maybe go look, and that's why. I had them, they were gracious enough to print these off a little bit ago, and go, go look at them and see.
The one off of Sheridan is also on the, yeah, sounded. The one off of Sheridan is also on the, uh, sounded favored.
Yeah, we've, we've tried and tried, uh, it has a, a gas line on it that needs to be moved off and done something with. And I don't think that's, yeah, I don't think that's, that's something we need to try to get away from.
Yeah.
And if we're, if we can somehow get that bridge replaced, then they're gonna have to move their gas line.
Which one's that one?
The one on Sheridan, twenty-five point three H one.
Uh, what about these two out here, um, they're, they're right next to each other, basically.
Yeah, within a hundred yards.
Okay, on the same road.
On the same road. So you have, you come in from the east and there's property and you come down the hill and there's a creek comes from the northeast. You go a hundred yards, there's another bridge and the creek comes from the northwest. And then after they get, yeah, and after they get past each other, then they end the next farm. That's where they go. They join.
This would have built the road a little farther over, it'd been a lot easier, huh?
Well.
Good luck with that, right?
But I did see that, you know, those farmers were concerned about that and they had came to us and they did, one of them put a, a rock crossing, but you know. On the west one, but you know, whenever it rains, it.
Yeah, that could get wild, will it? I mean, I'm.
But, so I just.
And, and it's not, I, I sympathize with that, but it's low traffic count compared to other areas.
Right, and if you look up here, if you look on this sheet that I sent to you guys. It will say buzzer out, yes, mail route, yes, or no. And those are also exciting, deciding factors in this also.
Question on deck condition ends, they just don't have.
Let's see.
Um, for on system, the bottom two. That condition.
Over condition. I guess I'm not seeing what you're seeing. They're not culverts, if it's under the culvert condition, they're not a culvert.
No, so like the deck condition, it, it scored the top two, four, but then it scored the bottom two as.
Maybe I sent you a different one than I copied off. Let me see that again, please. Or I didn't get it all. Oh, I have to look at that because I did send one to you, that's a different one, a different. But I will find that out.
Okay. And then just the, so we are applying for two programs.
Yes.
There's the off system, federal money program, and then Kansas local bridge improvement.
Yes.
So the off systems you've categorized for us, and then the Kansas local bridge, we would choose one of the on systems?
So it can go for either one.
Okay. We could do either or.
Yes.
But for your federal, you only want to focus on the purple, the off system.
The off system.
And you want the top.
Because we have to, by, by the guidelines, that's how, that's how it is.
And you want the top two, three?
I would like to have at least the top two on each.
Top two, got it.
But now the Kansas local bridge can do either one.
Yeah.
Because before there was no money for the on system bridges, period. So what they did is they came up with the Kansas local bridge improvement, and that can go also to. Where before you were just pretty well left to try to figure out.
Would go through the.
Okay. Which two bridges had that on there?
Um, it was number RS twelve ninety and RS twenty-three.
See, when I was going, now it shouldn't be here.
That would, so go to the left, where it says that would be four hundred and one.
Yeah, I think stairs, it's ours.
No, that's right. Alright, I will try to get that information, get it sent to you.
That's interesting, yeah, so, yeah, I've been, I've been going about each one, not three in each category, just go for it and see. Because word one, you can't get our budget.
Can we get them all? If we don't take.
We say, oh, we only buy, I mean, what happens, are we in trouble, Kate, or are we?
If you turn down their money, it's gonna be very, very hard for you to ever get another.
That's where I would make sure.
I think we did that one time, we, we didn't turn it down, we had accepted it, accepted one and then we didn't have the money, so we had to live off it here. And we didn't get it like for the next two years.
So, so one year, one year we applied for two on the same off system. Uh, we got one, but didn't get the other one. They came back later. And said, hey, somebody didn't use our money, so we've got money for another bridge. Do you want it? And, of course, so it's just kind of, however it works, that hasn't happened since, so.
Right.
But this is just kind of a guideline for you guys to look at, and if you need any more information, get ahold of us and we'll try to come up with.
So on Ottawa Road, you had that one mark, I'm just going to Ottawa because of the.
And it's right there at the highway.
But now, beyond that, is there anything else on Ottawa?
Alright, well, so Gabe has sent out a proposal for, for an R F P for engineering. He's gonna be our, our county engineer. And they're gonna go through those big boxes and everything down there as we're going. And tell us what we need to put in, and then we will, once we pick the engineering firm. And they do the survey, and then we will replace those before we start the project next year. The only bridge. Is past Ottawa would be down there on Osborne, is where we'll get into the, to the actual bridge.
We did that, we did that one already, the culvert.
That's, that's Ottawa, but that's a different part of Ottawa, yes. And that is done, by the way, so.
Do we have any cost estimates of what these look like yet? I'm just wondering.
Of what the bridges we're doing here, we can, we will have that before we apply.
Okay.
Okay, good.
Uh, yeah, cause that's kind of something also.
That'll give kind of a, that's all, that's all part of the application.
Culverts on Ottawa, there's gonna be a guide rating, okay, we have that in the budget already.
Okay, so, this year's money for Ottawa Road. Alright, cause remember we're putting that off till next year.
We budgeted.
But we budgeted a mile, so my intentions are to take that money and fix these culverts. And then hopefully, there's money left over to roll in to what we're doing. But yes, so that's, so we did get, right, but that's, that's the plan. Well, I know, hopefully they're not.
Well, well, within that.
Right, but that money is sitting there and I've got some contractual sitting there that I'm trying to stay out of. To, uh, to help, but there are things coming up that I have to.
I just, I love you, do it right and do it once.
So that's where, we're not done with the bridge thing here. M point oh twenty-six four has. More deck repair needed.
Oh.
Yeah, so. They're chaining it, and he, he invited, he told me yesterday, if you guys wanna come up, he will chain it and show you exactly what he's talking about.
We worried it might be more.
Yes, so let me get through everything I got today. And I wanted to show you, alright, so. Another eighty-seven thousand worth of work to the deck is what they're saying means to be done. Now, Eric, I did that too. Here's, here's, here's two, here's two things, here's two things. Alright, this, and I'll let you guys look at it. Shows you, or I'll explain it, this is special highway at a million fifty-four thousand. Ottawa Road Projects around was a hundred and eighty-five thousand, so it's gonna be around a hundred and ninety, a hundred and ninety-five. Uh, Swabian Engineering twenty-eight thousand miscellaneous items, we've already spent is thirty-one thousand. The bridge removal was fifty-three thousand already paid for, the low water crossing is a hundred and fifty-four. And we had it projected at two fifty, or close to that. The fall patching, which I have a P O for that, is a hundred and thirty-nine, and we had stuck in there two hundred thousand. So then the bridge, if you look at the bottom of it, the original was fifty-nine, the ninety-nine thousand for the overhang. And then the sixty-nine six for the additional deck repair still leaves us money in special highway. You wanna look at that?
You said.
You said, yeah, okay. So. Uh, I'm waiting for a change order on that, and here's something also. We can go on the, they, they included the whole overhang in at ninety-nine thousand. If we just go to the spots that are bad. And fix the bad spots, we won't have to spend that whole ninety-nine thousand on the overhang. We're better off to fix the deck if we run short than we are.
We are.
So, the parts of the, so like where it's fallen off, we need to fix, but some of the other we could possibly get by with if we're short. If we're short on money, they actually suggested that, that the deck, they said, needs to be done.
The, the decks are pretty important, I mean.
Yes, yeah, the other will, will last, we wanna fix the real bad spots. But if a piece of it falls off, it's really not gonna hurt anybody, but we wanna get those spots fixed too. So that's. Yeah, I'm not thrilled about it, but that's kind of what we use special highway for is a catch-all for these things that. And this honestly is something that probably should have been, it's been this way since two thousand fourteen. So.
Makes sense. So are they done finding problems, you think?
I hope. I hope.
It's like a never ending story.
It looks good what they're doing.
Okay, good.
It does, it looks good.
We'll give them that rebar higher, so we don't have.
Well, where they can, they have, yes.
We have to change the, do an apron approach or something, change something that we have to, because we gotta get, we gotta get that.
We gotta keep water out of there is the main thing.
That's, yeah.
So that's, I have a P O for that, if you guys are willing. On the sixty-nine, six hundred for the additional eighty-seven yards of deck repair.
They get the guard rail then?
Well, I'm waiting for the quotes, so I can get them sent to Pat. So we can send that to the insurance company.
To start a repair meeting yet?
So they've got one of them taken off and formed, ready to pour.
Okay.
And the other one they haven't touched yet until we get, they get the okay, I haven't given them the okay until we know, I need to know. I need to know what's gonna cost in case the insurance doesn't pay and make sure that we can cover it.
They already agreed to pay them, right?
They agreed to pay the first part that we sent them, so when they got into it, like, they had another piece of. Yeah, so that's, that's where I am with that, I don't wanna. You know, I would like to have some idea of if they don't pay more than the original part, that we would be able to cover that. Which I, I can make it work, it's just moving. Juggle, it's just what I do, so. No questions, Casey?
Um, so their proposal sixty-nine six, not eighty-seven.
So it's eighty-seven additional yards of that price, at eight hundred dollars a yard, equals the sixty-nine six. So.
I know, it's, it's just frustrating that it's like.
No, I know.
Take another look.
Well, I know.
Take another look, right? For me, it's like, we made the decision on the underneath because it's a need, right? And they're there, and so to rescind a decision because of additional costs, like I feel like it just.
Well, we can, we can leave.
Stinks, I think we need to do it right, because this is a major bridge that connects.
But we're not complete, we're still fixing the underneath for the wings.
Yeah, but I'm just saying, like, I don't think we should shortcut that because of this, like, I think we just need to do it right and put in there that's, it's done. And we move on.
Sixty-four years.
Yeah, exactly, because it's, it's just frustrating of, of just like, next week and next week, you know, and.
Yeah, I don't want any more of these conversations, I believe me, I don't.
Sticker tag of, and this is it.
I hope.
And then the deck and underneath are done, and that's a bridge that's very well-traveled, big in ag use. And we don't have to think about it.
Well, that's what I want.
I'm going for Alan's forty years, I like that number.
You and I won't have to worry about it.
Well, that'd be my concern.
So, and just to re, so to understand, like, the engineer came and looked at the damage, that's the initial amount.
And he did, while he was here, he did chain the deck, and he talked to me about what it was gonna cost at the time. I said, I don't wanna go over this because I don't know how much money I'm gonna have.
And that's when we went out for the site visit where they were starting, chunking away, finding rebar.
Well, this was, this, yeah, this was clear back in the very beginning. So when we had the collision damage, I thought, they're here, we need to do these other things. Why don't we try to get it done at the same time? So we got a cost estimate that I felt like I felt comfortable with. Okay, well, then they come and they say, oh, we're finding more, and we're finding more. So we did that, and then now here we are, there's a big chunk in the middle that they, they, they are waiting on approval to do.
Which, I mean, we saw that when we went out there, and it's done, it's not like.
Showed me a hairline crack yesterday, it runs down through it, and when you run a chain over it, you can definitely hear the difference between the good and the bad. I mean, you don't have to be a, an engineer to, to understand that, so.
And you have it in special highway?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, I would look for a motion to approve a purchase order in the amount of sixty-nine thousand, six hundred dollars for eighty-seven additional yards. A deck, deck repair, eight hundred dollars a yard, um, for Bridge M dot zero twenty-six dot four. Out of special highway to Comanche. Do I have a motion to approve?
Some of them.
Hey, it's been moved, do I have a second?
I don't think I am, cause I'm gonna be consistent with my previous vote, you know, it's the, just. I don't wanna run it short, as short at this time. I, I concede that we, it needs to be done, but yeah, it's just like the timing.
Okay. Hey, I will second, it's been moved and seconded, any further discussion? So it's moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign, passes to the one.
I have another P O for P C C.
I mean.
For completion of the fall patching, it is a hundred and thirty-nine thousand, eight forty-four, and it was budgeted also to come out of special highway. Project is complete.
The project's complete, this is the end of it.
And then I will need also, Casey. This one needs to be signed for Gabe.
Okay. Okay, so I have a purchase order, um, in the amount of a hundred and thirty-nine thousand, eight hundred and forty-four dollars. For the twenty-twenty-three fall patching, um, to P C C. This is being paid out of special highway as presented from our road and bridge superintendent, do I have a motion to approve?
Some.
Okay, moved and seconded, any discussion?
Just to clarify, so this is the final bill from.
Yes.
We're done now.
Now, so you know, uh, the traffic control was left off of it. They talked to me and we don't feel like we got any traffic control, so that portion of it has not been put on there. They sent us the final bill and we subtracted the, the traffic control because there wasn't.
Okay.
So if there's a hiccup there, that we'll, we'll have to deal with it, but it was non-existent.
Did you have to introduce some guys out to?
We closed the road in most all the local, all, all the time, most of the locations. When they did Neo Show Road going to the landfill. I had to go out there and they'd already started and didn't have their signs or anything up on the highway. So I had to go out there with their guy and watch traffic while he set out the signs, and I stayed there until everything was done. So, and I have to tell them where to stand, where to put everything, where to do all of it. And I didn't leave until I was comfortable, somewhat comfortable with what they had done.
With that west of Bethlehem, I personally went through there and the traffic control was the guy on the paper going like this.
And that's why, that's why we started, that's why we closed the roads.
Yeah.
Wow, okay, so it's been moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye.
Alright.
Down there where it says owner, I believe, but that'll, that will show what we paid the first part and what was due the second.
Okay, this is just a backup.
Yes. Then this is the ten thousand, seven hundred from brick construction on River Road drainage, the original bid was ten thousand, it was over seven. Then this is the ten thousand, seven hundred from brick construction on River Road drainage, original bid was ten thousand, it was over seven. Uh, I didn't see a problem, and I'm also gonna tell you that there's gonna be a couple seven thousand dollar checks, he helped us. With building the road. Up, so. Uh, they don't need a P O, but I just wanted you guys to be aware of it.
So is that all separate then?
They should be pretty well done today, we're trying to get the rest of the tubes put in.
Did we need to vote on?
No, that's just a backup for this, that needed signed with. I just didn't know if you wanted to see it and sign it too, you guys can put your names under there.
I just wanna make sure that.
Just wanna make sure you saw it.
He needs to go through the ditches one more time, but after the big rain the last time, uh, it all worked pretty well, so.
You gotta test that.
Yeah, we have one, one tube down there towards the end that. That was plugged when we pulled it out and everything drained out, so. We'll watch it, if we get a great big one, it seems to be causing a problem, there's one more tube we can put across the road. But so far. I think we're okay.
So I have a purchase order, um, in the amount of ten thousand, seven hundred dollars for River Road Drainage to Pruitt Construction. Being paid out of Special Highway as presented from the Road and Bridge Superintendent, do I have a motion to approve? It's been moved and seconded, any discussion? Seeing none. It's been moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye. Passes three to zero.
This is for the lease on the new John Deere tractor. Cause we, the other one, we met three hundred and fifty hours, and we just turned it in. It's for seven thousand, you'll have to. See what the change is.
Okay, so we leased this before, and this is.
Yeah, we have it for three years. So this is our second year.
Okay, so, this is a lease for John Deere sixty-one fifty-five M tractor. At a rate of twenty dollars and seventy-two cents per hour, for guaranteed three hundred and fifty hours. We would like to receive one invoice after delivery of the equipment for a total of seven thousand, two hundred and fifty-two dollars. An additional invoice may be required for hours over three hundred and fifty and any damage. To the equipment after the equipment is picked up on a mutually agreed upon date. The invoice shall be delivered to Acheson County Road and Bridge after delivery of the equipment. So this is just a letter to proceed, um, for us to. Approve, so do I have a motion to approve the letter dated today for Acheson County Road and Bridge to rent. The equipment as described. Moved and seconded, any discussion? Okay, it's been moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye. Passes.
Do a quick question, do you have the tractor get sold?
Not yet, I just signed, he just sent the, uh, when we lowered the price, we had to set up a new. So, not yet. So am I out of time?
No, you're fine.
I got, I got a couple questions. Then I'll tell you, well, first of all, I'm gonna tell you that. I'm working with Kato on a functional classification map, they'd sent that to me before, remember I, that I spoke to you guys about that? Alright, so they were wanting, we were six miles over. And I added the four or five miles on two eighty-six back, so then I had to take. Uh, eleven miles off of that, so to get down where the Federal Highway Association wanted us to be. So I picked select really careful which roads didn't make sense. And I took those off. Uh, we sent an email this morning. About, do we have to have so many miles of secondary routes, you know, cause I wanna make sure we get all of this done. Because this one has to be signed by the commission, the last one was signed in nineteen eighty-five, or. It was a, it was a long time ago.
That's a better question, now. On what criteria do they determine we can only have so many miles?
That's the Federal Highway Association, I don't know how they do that. No, I don't. Right.
I mean, but.
But they were wanting to take a lot off, and I'm not willing to take a lot off. And I don't think we necessarily have to, so we're gonna see.
Yeah, did they? Change classifications, which automatically, if it was in before.
So.
Change.
So they're wanting to change the classifications, they're wanting to take, they wanted to take a, and I can send that to you guys so you can see it. They wanted to take a lot of them off, and they wanted to make them local roads.
I, I probably didn't say that right, I mean, did they change their criteria for to meet that, which then drew us into a different.
Every so many years, they read. Like two thousand and ten, they did something. You know, from what I'm reading, but every so often they do this, I'll send you guys the email, so you can have it.
You sent it to us. I took it to K C C A and none of the other counties. It resonated with, like, not even the ones around us, so.
Oh, I know.
So.
But they told me they started with, uh. Uh, the bigger cities, like there's, so they're concerned about around Acheson also, so I have to talk to Mr. Mahoney down here. About what they have around Acheson, so it started from the way I understand it. Like the Wichitas and the bigger cities got started and they got to here. I can tell you is what they told me.
Have you checked with other counties around us?
I have, and they have it.
Yeah.
Nope, I did that right off the bat.
I took that map you gave me and asked at our roundtables, and they were all like, no, we, we wouldn't, haven't seen that, so. I'm just wondering why. It just seems bizarre.
Yeah, I agree. But they had roads like, you would come off a Kingman. Go over to Kyle and to go to seventy-three. So when they put in seventy-three highway. Then they expect everybody to cut short to it and not go down two eighty-six, and I told them, that's not what happens, they drive two eighty-six. So we took off those little short half-mile stretches, Neo Show and Kyle were two of them. Why would that be a major collector? It's not, and then Eric, you asked a question. Or people's asked Cheyenne Road, okay? A major collector out on Cheyenne goes down to two fourteen. Then it cuts over. And then it goes clay into a major collector into Jefferson Camp. So that our collectors don't always stop in our county, they come out of the counties around us and go on down. So maybe that's the reason why they decided to pay that portion. Because it went down, and then you go down two fourteen, and then you take clay, and then clay is a major collector in Jefferson Camp. And those collectors are hooked together. So I can't answer why, we're just doing what they ask, I'll bring it to you before anything is. But we wanna, but they also asked, what roads do you guys know you have, cause we wanna make sure that our roads and your roads match. So that's something we're trying to do. So, kinda crazy. But, Corey's supposed to be on at this time, or am I?
Uh, no, he's got fifteen minutes.
Alright, so, uh. We're working on that. Fall patching's completed, Ottawa Road Site Two's been completed, I haven't got the final bill on it yet, River Road's almost complete. The low-water project on two fifty is supposed to start about the first next week. I have some questions about the nine-one-one. Address signs per the resolution. And this is. This is something. Are we going off of the two hundred and fifty dollars, or are we going off of what the resolution said before? Or what are we doing?
I'm in favor of going off what the resolution said before. And.
What did it say?
That they issue the new owners an address. And then if something happens, they damage it, they lose it, they run over it and say, no more, and need another one, then they pay for a replacement.
And this is something we don't have to solve today, but this is a, this is a question, so. So we run into crazy things, we, I mean, over, over here and us, we run into this craziness, so. Uh, just sometime here in the future, we, if we could get a. A workshop, if we could sit down and go over some stuff and try to. To figure out what would be the best.
I think it'd be easier to keep, keep track of that way too, because initially we provided them every address. But there's still onesie, twosies that were either missed, or like, so there's one, I was asked about last week, they purchased the property. And they're like, I don't have an address sign, and so it's like, we'll contact them, and you never know, did the previous owner have one? You know, and, and it's now mysteriously disappeared, but either way, like, the point is you want them to have one if they need one.
And then I'll also, yes, that's, that's what I think, I just wanted to, to bring that up. Uh. And then also part of that is whenever we're. Selling things to everyone, selling merchandise or whatever, signs, whatever, we're probably gonna have to charge sales tax, correct?
Yeah, except on items we discussed.
Yeah, so. Everybody to be aware of that.
You mean the smooth township?
No.
Okay.
They're okay, but like, if, if you come in and wanna buy a tube. I'm supposed to charge you your sales tax. So, um, yeah, that's just another thing that.
Well, have we been selling to individuals?
There has been some of that. But not anymore.
I was thinking buy the tube somewhere else, right?
That's where I'm, that's where I'm sending them, I am sending them to. Places where they can purchase their culverts.
Yeah.
But like, uh, noxious weed, we don't have to worry about, and we're selling to. If the city of Acheson wanted a tube, we wouldn't have a problem there because they're. Another government. So. But that's just some food for thought, anything that we do do that, we're gonna have to. Any questions?
Yeah.
What you got?
What's planned tomorrow?
Tomorrow? You going?
Yeah.
I don't, see, I've been so busy, I don't even know, yeah, I'm going.
I don't know.
That's right down with you then, or hey, we'll do, if you twist my arm hard enough.
Yeah, we'll figure something out. No, we can figure that out.
You can ride with me, I don't care who drives.
Emily's going too, so. Uh, that's something I like her to go to and see and experience, it's Northeast Kansas County Highway Association. And did you all have the opportunity for the spring conference? If you wanted to go. Don't forget that, out at Prairie Band Casino.
What's the date on that, you remember?
It's in May.
Yeah.
That's, I'm not being smarter like that, that's all I can tell you.
Yeah, I think I've got confidence on that one.
Alright, well.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
In a bit. I have that, we already see P for that by May thirteenth on that. It is, that's the K A C D. Is that the one that's out at Prairie Band? Is that a K A C deal?
I don't think it's K A C. Highway officials or something.
I think that that one's the bigger one, this one tomorrow is just Northeast Kansas. Possibly. Um, okay, so. We have. We will. Resess into, um. Twenty-twenty-five budget workshop with EMS and Rescue, and then. We'll have the Road and Bridge twenty-twenty-five budget workshop, and then we will come back in after that, so do I have a motion to recess into budget workshops?
Someone, second?
Hey, it's moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye. Hey, we're back in the open session. Uh, unfinished business. Anyone have anything? Hey, county counselor updates?
Right, uh, you should have in your packet a, yes, a voluntary waiver of hearing. And dismissal of water, water right. This relates to, uh. A permit that the county previously obtained. To get water to irrigate the, uh, all fields at the. Acheson Sports Complex. The last few years, they have switched over from using water in the dam. Um, to using city water, municipal water, so we no longer need. Uh, that. You have to have a license, uh, from the state permission to use. Surface waters, and we have one, and, uh, there's a. Uh, administrative requirement of filing reports annually. And this would get us out of the requirement to file those reports, it's been recommended through A S A F, who operates the. The sports complex for the channel. I don't know a whole lot more about it, but.
Alright, so it, it looks like it takes the signature of the chair, so I would look for a motion to allow the chair to sign the voluntary dismissal of a water right. Or permit and waiver of hearing to the Chief Engineer, Kansas Department of Agriculture. As presented by our county counselor, do I have a motion to approve? Okay, so moved and seconded, any discussion? Okay, hearing none, moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Passes. Alright, um, executive session, sorry, did you have another one?
Yeah, a couple things. Last week, you approved the abstracting contract with, uh, O'Keefe Wilson for a tax sale. Uh, that's been signed now by O'Keefe Wilson. Uh, I sent over today the first fifty. Tracks for the next tax sale, to be included in the next tax sale. Uh, so. We're started down there, really, and we're, we're in process for the next tax sale. I have a, another matter that either this week or next would probably take about a ten-minute executive session, attorney-client.
Okay.
Um, if you.
Do it real quick, yeah.
And I would ask Mark and, and Jody to look at.
Say, attorney-client?
Yes.
I'll move that the Board of County Commissioners, who's that's an executive session. At two twenty-one P M for consultation with an attorney for the public body, which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship. As allowed by K S A seventy-five dash four thirty-one nine B two. And that purpose of the first session is to protect the confidentiality of the discussion, and that the board come out of executive session and. Ten minutes or fifteen?
Ten, he said.
Yeah, I think ten probably.
Ten minutes in the commission room, the courthouse basement, and those present will be the three commissioners, county counselor, H R, and finance director.
Been moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye.
I, I mean, I've made motions to vote against and for.
Okay. We're here back in open session, um. Approval of the expenses. Uh, do I have a motion to approve the expenses for this week? The expenses this week, do I have a second? It's been moved and seconded, any discussion? No, seeing none, it's been moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye. Aye, passes three to zero. Hey, I passed, public comment. Seeing none, who, I have a motion to adjourn.
So moved, second.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye. Aye, passes. Three to zero.